Good evening and welcome. Would like to welcome those present and those at home to the July 14 Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission Special Meeting and Public Hearing. Sonya, would you kindly take the roll?
Yes, Chairman of the Chair?
President.
Commissioner Gary?
President.
Commissioner Lesniak?
Here.
Commissioner Marhol?
Right.
Commissioner Mateo? Absent. Commissioner Mendoza? Absent. And Commissioner Pellethier?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Great. Thanks, Sonya. We have principally two matters to discuss this evening. The first is, under new business, we have a signed permit to review. And then the other matter that we'll be discussing this morning is, or this afternoon, this evening.
Just work through all the times.
Sleep deprivation is pretty... We will be reopening a public hearing that was opened at a prior meeting to discuss a variation request. So, under the topic of new business, we have a business sign review. Sonya, would you kindly take us through that matter?
Yes, as you recall, we recently adopted a new sign code. And as part of that adoption, the commission had asked that any new blade signs, the first few that were applied for, be brought before you for review and input. So, we have our second blade sign application before us. It's for Athletico, that will be locating at 49 to 51 East Burlington Street. They are looking to do a blade sign on the north wall? North wall of the building, near the east corner of the building. The main entrance is on the east side of the building. Based on the submitted rendering, the blade sign will not extend above the cornice line. The clearance will be eight feet, which is the minimum clearance required by the code. The clearance from the facade is four inches, which meets the maximum of six inches. The overall size is six square feet and the projection is 40 inches, both of which meet our code requirements. The sign is three inches thick with an aluminum tube frame and aluminum face. The mounting bracket is also aluminum and the whole thing will be painted blue with white lettering. You do have a copy of the sign detail attached to the staff report. The existing signage that is there is to be removed. The sign will not be illuminated. We do not permit internally illuminated blade signs, so the sign will not be illuminated. The proposed blade sign is harmonious with the building. It is also harmonious with their proposed sign package. They also submitted for a wall sign and a new awning. The wall sign is in the same color palette as the blade sign, so it will be blue and white. And staff does recommend approval of the proposed sign. As I said, you have a copy of the detail. The petitioner is here to answer any questions that you might have. And that's about it?
Great. Thank you. With respect to the awning that you mentioned, that's not on the rendering here, is it envisioned that there will be lettering on that awning?
No, it'll just be a new awning over the vestibule entrance on the east side of the building, and it will be a blue awning. I believe currently there is a brown awning, I want to say, over the vestibule entrance on the east side of the building.
It's not on the sidewalk?
No, no, it's not. It's on the parking lot side.
And this business is only going to be occupying the east half, what used to be Arcade Antiques?
It'll be the entire frontage.
The entire frontage, okay.
So, the post office will remain in the rear, but Athletico will be taking the entire frontage of the building.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
A whole bunch of things. There are a bunch of inconsistencies in the drawing, and let me just run down through these six. I think I understand them. Your memo certainly clarified them, Sonya, but just to be sure, where there are items where two things are stated and they're conflicting, I want to make sure that I know what I'm voting on.
Uh huh.
So, let me recite these six, and then if I'm wrong someplace, somebody can indicate where and how.
Okay.
And some of them you just covered. The aluminum, it is an aluminum face. It is not electric, there's no electrical feed that's associated with it because it's unlit.
Uh huh.
The abbreviations D/F presumably means deep fabricated, and AFF, I presume, means above grade. The location is really as shown on the drawing. It's not by others, as stated someplace. It is an aluminum mounting plate, not a steel mounting plate, and there's a 22-inch measurement on the drawing that really has no bearing on, for us, we can just ignore that. Is that consistent with everything?
The DF is double-faced.
Oh, double-faced, okay. Okay, within those limits, I, it seems to me that there is, if you're walking along the sidewalk, the only sign you're going to see will be this blade sign above. You won't be able to, when you walk past the windows, you won't have any signage on the windows indicating what the name of the company is or where the entrance is. Is that correct? And is that what is intended?
Correct. They're proposing a wall sign as their primary sign, and then they're proposing the blade sign. They're not proposing any window signs.
But the wall sign, I presume, would be at the entrance, or I'm...
No, it's on the Burlington side.
Oh, it's on the face?
The face, the lettering will be going here.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, this is dealing exclusively with the blade sign?
Yes, I understand that, but I'm just worried about making sure there isn't some other sign that we're ignoring. So, there'll be nothing in the windows, there's going to be, the wall sign is above the blade sign, and that's it then. And the awning is on the other side, okay, I got that, and that's it?
Okay. I have no comments. Joel, Teresa, that's good?
Nothing.
Okay.
I move, we approve?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sonya, would you kindly take the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Gary?
Aye.
Commissioner Lesniak?
Yes.
Commissioner Marhol?
Yes.
Commissioner Pellethier?
Yes.
Chairman of the Chair?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, just wanted to thank you very much for investing in Riverside and contributing to our commerce downtown, so thank you very kindly. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem, we'll be in touch.
Yeah, please continue to work through the Building Department. Anything else? Okay, then moving to item four on this evening's agenda, this is the public hearing concerning the property at 225 Lawton. It's a variation request addressing the expansion of a non-conforming structure to allow for an addition onto a non-conforming detached garage in the R1A zoning district. So, this is a continuation of a public hearing that was started on June 22nd, and because of some scheduling issues, we needed to continue this hearing from that date, which is what we are doing this evening. So, thank you very much for accommodating our scheduling, and thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. So, Sonya, would you kindly, since we have a different census here this evening, would you kindly call?
Call the roll?
Do I call the roll first and then?
Yeah, so we need a, did you do the motion and second?
No, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, motion and second, okay. So, I need to reopen the public hearing.
I'll motion and reopen the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, the public hearing is reopened now. Sonya, would you kindly call the roll?
Okay. Commissioner Gary?
President.
Mr. Lesniak?
Still here.
Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Commissioner Pellethier?
Here.
Chairman Kuchera?
President. So, we have a quorum, and we will continue. So, any objections to me reading an abbreviated notice of the public hearing? Okay. Notice is hereby given to all interested persons that a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Village of Riverside will be held on Thursday, July 14, 2016, at 7:00 PM to consider an application for a variation from Section 10-10-4(c) of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance for a property located at 225 Lawton Road in order to construct an addition onto a non-conforming detached garage. The full text of the announcement will be in our meeting minutes. This same notice was published in the June 1 edition of the Riverside Brookfield Landmark, and in accordance with our ordinance, notice was mailed via first-class mail to homeowners within the prescribed distance of the property. And a sign was also erected at the property announcing the public hearing. I think that takes care of all administrative items. So, Sonya, would you kindly then introduce the topic to us this evening?
Yes, you have before you the variation request that the Harbeks have. They are looking to build a conforming addition onto their existing non-conforming detached garage. The subject property is Zoned R1A. They are looking to build an approximately 400-square-foot addition onto their existing garage. The existing two-car garage is setback only 2.4 feet from the side property line and about 2.2 feet from the rear property line, and the required setback is three feet from any side or rear property line. The existing garage, other than that, is conforming. It has a height of 13 feet 6 inches and a sidewall height of 8 feet 9 inches, so it meets our maximum peak height and wall height requirements in the zoning ordinance. The proposed garage will meet the three-foot setback from the rear and side property lines. You have a copy of the plat of survey included with your staff report, as well as their site plan and details, elevations on the garage. For your reference, the proposed garage addition will have a hipped roof with a peak height of 16 feet 6 inches. The maximum height for a detached garage is 16 feet, but may be up to 18 feet if the garage matches the roof of the principal structure. As you may recall, we kind of went through a whole thing with this. We kept that as it is. The existing house has a hipped roof, the garage will have a hipped roof, so they're allowed to go up to 18 feet for their peak height. The sidewall height of the proposed garage addition is 12 feet, which meets the maximum 12-foot sidewall height allowed by our zoning ordinance. The proposed garage will have a car lift, is that correct? I think that's what it indicates in the floor plan. So, this is to provide additional parking and allow for a car lift in the garage. You have some photographs also included in your staff report that show the house and the garage, the existing garage in relation to it. Picture of the garage in the backyard, and you can kind of see the area adjacent to the garage where the addition will be going. The plans do indicate that the one tree closest to the garage is going to need to be removed in order to allow for the addition. So, other than the fact that it is enlarging a non-conforming structure, which is not permitted per our non-conforming section of the ordinance, the proposed addition and its addition to it will meet all of the bulk standards, so will meet building coverage, impervious surface, and setback and height requirements. If the variation is approved, then they would be able to obtain a building permit for the proposed garage. According to our zoning ordinance, there are three standards that must be met in order to approve a variance. The first one being that the owner of the property in question shall suffer undue hardship in the absence of such variation, the second being that the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances, and the third is that the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The petitioners are here to answer any questions that you have, and you have a copy of the non-conforming building and structure standards included in your packet as well for reference. That is all?
Great. Thank you. So, just two points to make. Just a reminder to everyone involved in the process, our determination this evening is advisory to the Village Board. They're the ones who ultimately will make the determination on the variation request. So, we are advisory to the board. Sonya, thank you also for delineating the current variation standards, the conditions that must be met. Those are currently, it's a subject being discussed between ourselves and the Village Board, but these are the ones we have before us at this point. I think that was it. I do want to invite the petitioner and others to make any remarks, but if you do, I'd ask that you be sworn in, so if you anticipate making any comments, Sonya, would you kindly swear in? Anyone?
Please raise your hand? Do you, yes, please.
Retire, do you want to speak to them? Why don't you get sworn in?
Just in case. All right. Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge? Thank you.
And if you would, when you do come to the dais, if you would kindly state your name and address for the record?
Well, thank you so much. My name is Leilani Harbeck, and I'm one of the petitioners, along with my husband, in this matter. We live at 225 Lawton in our new residence to Riverside. We've been a member of the community for, I think, about seven weeks now and are thoroughly enjoying it. We moved here from Omaha, Nebraska, and are looking to expand the garage to accommodate some of our vehicles. As you can see, we do have a need for a car lift. That's where my husband is right now, is at the cruise night with one of our vehicles, so thoroughly enjoys that as one of his hobbies. So, we're here asking the commission for a variance. As was explained, the existing detached accessory structure or garage, when we purchased the house, is not in conformance with the three-foot setbacks. There is a corner of the garage that, I think, six inches on one side, eight inches on another, and due to the angle and things, by the time it gets, I guess, to the other side of the garage is in conformance. So, the addition we are proposing is in conformance with all of the different requirements provided under the code. So, when we are reviewing the standards that are in place for granting of a variance, you know, it is my strong opinion that we meet all three of the current requirements in place. Turning first to the undue hardship portion of it, certainly our existing garage structure is sound in all, you know, aspects. It seems to me like it would be extremely unnecessary to tear that down to rebuild an existing structure a few inches away from where, to build a new structure a few inches away from where the existing structure is, obviously that would come at very significant financial expense. So, you know, I think our plight is unique, unique circumstances. We purchased the residence, the garage has been in place for a number of years. I can only envision that at the time it was built, it met all home code requirements, and maybe things have changed over time. Everything that we are proposing is going to be in conformance. We're not going to be extending the non-conformity and to the extent that the garage is there, right? It can remain in non-conformance, kind of in perpetuity. And it's not going to alter the essential character of locality. You know, Greg here has done an incredible job designing the proposed addition. It does keep in line with the locality, and it does match the existing character of our residence. So, based on that, if the commission has any questions, I'm happy to answer, and I also want to express my thanks for everyone being here at a special meeting to consider this. I understand that you all are volunteers, and so your time is limited, and we're very thankful.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have anything that you want to add?
Greg?
I have a question.
That's okay.
I think you've covered all the bases.
Okay. Okay, so if we don't have, at this point, we can close the public meeting and open it up to our own discussion, or would you prefer to keep it?
Let's see, keep it open if the commission has questions for her, and let's make sure that no one else wants to speak.
Okay.
If you're going to close it, I'll just make a couple quick comments. My name is Greg Randall, I live at 189 Heron. I'm an architect here in town. The existing garage, the extent of the non-conformity is literally the thickness of the one wall on the east side. And like she was saying, it's on the south, it's just the corner, and it tapers to zero in 13 and 1/2 feet. So, before you even get to the other side of the garage, it's clear of that south violation. So, I mean, we're talking really about the wall thickness of the garage that's not in conformance. And so, I think the non-conformity is, it's not egregious by my stretch of imagination. And in following the code, we're almost to the same side of the other sidewalk line setback, almost the same distance. So, it's not like we're increasing the garage to the point where it's beyond what's allowable. We're not increasing the non-conformity. In the non-conformity extension part of the code relative to the principal structures, they actually allow you to extend the non-conformity itself, and we're not even, you know, we're not extending any of the non-conformities, so. So, I just, the undue hardship being unreasonable to require them to remove the whole garage in order to build one that is compliant, I could kind of fall into that notion.
I've got more architectural questions than the fact of it.
Sure.
Because I'm old, and I can't really read this eight and 1/2 by 11. Is it a stucco addition?
Yes.
To match the existing garage?
It'll match the existing garage.
And the same thing with the roofing?
Yes.
As far as, you are removing a tree, did you happen to know what type of tree and what caliber it was? I think that was always a concern, I think even when you were on the commission about, you know, the removals of trees?
I did not. I know it's a fairly large tree. I don't recall the exact type of tree it is.
It's oak?
And we've tried to figure out ways of trying to preserve it, but there really isn't any. By the time we put the apron on, we're going to, you know, get rid of any of the potential area for drip line and water in the trees through natural conditions, so.
And there will be several other trees already being on the property, so I don't remember what that might all change, the overall aesthetics, have a major impact on shade and on water or on neighborhood blocks?
If you look at the picture, if you base it off of the rest of the garage, it looks like it'd probably be about a 22 to 24-inch caliber tree.
Well, I was more interested really on what type of a tree it was, I mean...
I'm not sure which type of oak it is. It's got the skinnier one, so maybe a pin oak? But I'm not for certain on that.
Very thin leaves?
They, I believe they looked pretty thin. I'm trying to verify.
If they're thin leaves, it's most likely a pin oak.
Uh huh.
Okay. I mean, that's more of the architectural questions than I have, other than the fact that I wanted to ask one other question, though I think this may be handled. And your review of it, when it comes into billing permit, is the impervious area?
Uh huh.
You know, what's left, mainly because it's a long driveway, now it's a multi-carrier? Is that something that you review?
Yeah, and it's something I already reviewed, and they will be still well under the 50% impervious requirement, so.
Okay. I guess I have a question concerning the utilities on the backside. One of the reasons for setbacks, of course, not just appearance, but it's also maintenance of property. There are two utility poles behind the property line. They don't show on the plat of survey, so I assume that they are in the other property behind, and that it's a free area, it's not obstructed with other fences or buildings of any kind. Is it reasonably open?
It's, the utility is on the left-hand side.
Right, and there's another one in the other corner, and there must be an easement going across the whole backside.
There's no recorded easement.
There's no recorded easement. All right, then the next question is, is there a non-conforming, I don't think you'll know the answer to this, but do we know whether or not the people in the house behind have any complaints about, have issued any comments about this? Because if there's a tight constraint back there, and we're leaving it that way, well, to get access to this is going to be difficult, and when you're putting in a 10-foot wall, or a 12-foot wall, I guess it is, yeah, 12-foot wall, you're going to have to maintain the property with a three-foot setback at a 12-foot height. So, you're not going to have another piece of property, such as an easement, to go by. You're going to have to go into the other person's property and use it, so.
Is the other person's garage literally right behind where you're putting the brand orange?
Two of them are.
Or is it further back?
It's further back.
And I'm not overly concerned. In fact, if it was closer, I would be even happier.
We've been here for six weeks, I don't recall it being close. We do have our structure, and we have a fence that goes across the back of our property as it is now, along with a dog room that will be removing that dog room and part of that fence. It's part of this addition line.
Okay. But it does look like there will be a 35-foot wall, stucco wall, no windows, eight foot to 12-foot high on the north side, and on the south side, two walls of two garages with a break between those, that's a minimal setback. It's going to be a very, and with utility wires going overhead. Is that correct? As far as I can see, that's what we're going to, that's what's going to happen. I guess what it boils down to in the long run, do we have any obligation to worry about the utility corridor that's in there? If one of those poles gets hit by lightning and it goes down, the utility's going to have to come in and replace that pole, and we're going to be cutting off the entire backside of this lot with this garage, a 35-foot wide garage, full width, except for the setbacks. Do we have any obligation to worry about ComEd and the phone companies and the cable companies?
If you look at the GIS printout, I'm not sure that we're made, this would make it any worse than any other areas in other backyards. Because most of these garages are at the very back of the property, so it's a pretty narrow area, say, between Gage and Olmstead. Almost all those garages are towards the back, and then between Gage and Lawton, same thing.
Okay, so we're not, I realize there's nothing in the code that addresses that. I guess I'm really just raising the issue to be sure I understand everything that's Are there, do we know if there are any non-conforming variances against the setbacks on those two garages to the rear? I would assume not, but we don't know.
I do not have that information readily available. Typically, if adjacent properties are very close to the property line, you know, like within a foot of it, it will be noted on a plat of survey. In this case, they're not noting anything, so I would say that the adjacent garages would be at least a foot away from the property line, if not meeting the required three-foot setback.
Okay. The third question I had is, you state that you would have to tear the building down, I guess to meet the setback. I guess I don't understand that the setback is based on the drip line of the roof. If you...
No, it's not for detached accessory structures. It's based on, it's to the foundation.
Based on the foundation, yes.
They would have to tear down the garage.
Okay, all right, that makes sense then. But, boy, that's going to be a difficult access to get up there to maintain them. I guess that's all I have.
And for the commission's end, I spoke with all the homeowners around us, and they have a particular concern, so they have to leave, so they can drift over. Either for or against, but we have discussed this with all of the homeowners, so that's... Either for or against, but we have discussed this with all of the, the, the.
Joel, Theresa?
Do you have any questions?
My only question was, where are you gonna put the gutter, the downspence?
Probably Donald E. Eve, and probably not, maybe to the downer.
And so you may, you may want to look at that from a rainwater management perspective. I don't know if it's gonna make, we're not in a position necessarily to recommend anything, but as a, as a favor, you might want to think about a French.
That would again, that would be something that you would be looking at building smart water drainage. So that's a code issue that we don't have to worry about.
Yeah, we don't have to.
A radio will be attached to this.
I mean, it's just a smart thing to do.
Right, and that's, again, that's not something that this body can, can address, that that's really more of a code issue and the billing department can work with you on that. We're looking very percolately at the, at the variation at best, so.
We do have a requirement that it has to be maintained within the property, isn't it? I mean, that they can't drain onto.
Right, they can't directly discharge onto the neighborhood. Being only three feet off of the property, they really only have one option on where to aim that, so.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Further questions or comments from the commission?
Okay. And at this point, I'd like to, a motion and a second to bring the public hearing portion of this matter to, to close the public hearing, and then we can open it up to our own discussion and motion.
I move that we close the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing is closed, and now we can have a discussion. Again, I would point your attention to page two of staff's memo that delineates the, the three conditions under which, that each of which must be met in order for us to grant the variation. And I'll just, they're short enough, I can read them. Uh, here's the whole preamble. According to section ten dash two dash two dash two A of the zoning ordinance, the village board may vary the application of the regulations set forth in the zoning ordinance in specific cases where there are practical difficulties or particular hardships in carrying out the strict letter of the regulations. Planning and zoning commission may recommend varying the provisions of the zoning ordinance upon making the following findings: that the owner of the property in question will suffer undue hardship in the absence of such variation; that the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances; and that the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. So I would suggest that we focus our discussion at this point of the public hearing around the extent to which the petition satisfies those three requirements. David, can you?
How sorry, just because. Usually I am against variations, but I think that this one here has probably been the easiest to review in regards to the variations, in terms of what their plight is. I believe that they do have a plight. I do believe that they have undue hardship, the fact of having to tear down what is a virtually good garage for very limited, uh, issues that they have with, that's existing, that the fact that they are making the new garage actually conform to a proper code requirements and our zoning requirements. I think that this is probably the best example of, of being able to grant the variance. Uh, you know, personally, I think it, it matches the house. I think that the fact that in the back with, with the neighbor's garage, literally right behind where they're doing it, it isn't something that's an unsightly, something that's gonna be unsightly to them to say that, okay, I've gotta look at an entire back of a garage. So I, I think this one here, I think we can make an argument that they, they meet all three requirements.
Can, can you amplify your assessment with respect to item two, that the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances?
Well, the unique circumstances is that they have an existing garage that's just barely, doesn't meet code. Okay? It, it's unique because, and it kind of falls right into the undue hardship. The fact is, is that, yes, could they tear down the garage and build a three-car garage in the back that meets code? The answer is yes. Okay? But I think that's something where you say, okay, you know, is that an expense that you wanna put on one of the village residences when really it's been existing there? Yes, I understand that the fact that our code says that, you know, we're not supposed to add on to a nonconforming structure, but I think that's what the variance process is here for, is to be able to look at that and say, okay, you know, what are the issues? You know, and I look at it more aesthetically and how it's gonna affect the neighbors and all the rest. And everything that I've kind of looked at on this plan and the design of it, I mean, they're, they're meeting the height requirements unlike other ones that wanted to go two stories. This is really not any different than virtually the house and actually lower than the house roof. So I think that, I think they meet all three, at least personally, if I had a vote on it, they meet all three requirements.
Great, thank you.
I think an even stronger argument for number two is really going to three B. We're supposed to use the three criterias, the cri, the number, the six criterias that are under number three are to be used to supplement the, the other criterias. And I think three B says that conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classifications. Um, and generally, that's true. You're not going to find situations like this where there's a property which is just inches over in, in variance with the, the setbacks that are required. So I'd been, I'd been pretty universally on most of these meetings using three B as a substitute for the, for the unique circumstances. Um, and by that basis, I, I claim that, yes, it does meet them. Um, but I still am having trouble with the undue hardship. This has always been the thing that we have struggled with, um, and I think at this point in time to start changing our opinion would be inconsistent and unfair to some of the people that we've had before.
I disagree, but I'll let you finish.
Okay. Uh, I guess I don't understand quite why, well, I didn't ask the questions, but I guess I could, I could have. Why can't you simply just build a second garage as opposed to attaching the two? Doesn't that achieve the same thing? And it, it does not become an extension of it, and then we don't have this problem of having to ask for variance. Um, I realize architecturally, it's gonna look different, and it's more of a struggle for Greg, but, uh.
Well, you can, if you want, if you want to ask questions and for clarification, you can.
Okay, I am.
Okay. Um, to answer you, the.
If you could go to the podium.
Greg, you can be kind enough to.
Thank you.
In response, in order to do that, there's approximately one location in which that could, that could occur, and that would actually cause both of those trees to be eliminated because that accessory structure would still have to be in this back area. And in terms of a land use, it would create kind of a, a lost order of the, the rear yard that's then gonna be walled off and isolated from view of the principal structure.
If I can interject, I don't think by code, there can. Have a secondary structure out there.
Right, I'm trying to, I'm trying to identify that, but that's my recollection.
So, and then I, I think the, the other answer that would have been able, that would have been a good one for you to say is that if you talk about a maintenance problem, if you had two garages and literally a foot in between them, that would be a real maintenance problem.
Become a bigger issue, yeah.
Would become even a bigger issue. So it, but going back to the unique cer, you know, the undue hardship, I, I really, unlike all of the other variances that we denied, the undue hardship here is the fact is, is that having to tear down the existing garages, that's what I was waiting for, sorry. Okay. Uh, is having to tear down the existing garages to make them conforming, whereas a lot of the other variances, they were, they could have done a lot of things that you're doing with your, your garage right now. In fact, the other garage could have went across the back if they didn't wanna do that. Okay? The, if we're talking about the front porch, well, there is no undue hardship. I mean, there's not a reason that the front porch has to be there. Okay? This one here is that you're asking that you wanna add a garage that would accommodate your antique vehicle, which I'm assuming it is if it's out there, or some sort of antique vehicle. So I think that this one does have a unique undue hardship. And the hardship really is the, the fact of having to tear down a, a perfectly good garage. And the fact is, is that I know the garage and I know the house very well because I've walked there today, so I know that it's not in bad condition. So that's the hardship, I believe.
I guess I would argue, counter-argue, that, again, your examples of the front porch not being undue hardship, do you really need a front porch? There are a lot of people who would give their itty for a single-car garage who, or a double-car garage. And here we are saying that two additional parking positions in a garage is an undue hardship. Uh, have we looked also, I'd like to ask one other question that, that came up, that I thought of, that have we looked at just raising the roof on the existing garage and putting a lift in there?
They would not be allowed to do that. That would still be expanding.
It's a nonconforming structure.
The nonconforming structure.
What about ten-six-six?
It's not a principal structure. It's not the residence, it's an accessory structure. So they're not allowed to vertically expand.
It's only in the, it's only in the residence that you can raise.
It's only for the residence, yes.
Correct.
So they would not be allowed to modify this garage in any way, shape, or form. They could paint it.
We discussed that.
They can re-roof it.
They can replace the roof, but they cannot modify it to make it taller or to make it larger.
Okay. And just for the record, Sonia has corrected me there, that you can have multiple accessory structures so long as you're meeting all the various code requirements, lack coverage, et cetera.
Mm-hmm. So we have an eight hundred square foot in the aggregate limitation on accessory buildings, so.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, I, I believe that the, the undue hardship is met by the requirement of having to tear down a perfectly good garage. Um, you know, it's solid construction. Um, it's certainly in keeping with the neighborhood, so the fact that they are not extending the nonconformity, um, and so, so they could just tear down the existing garage and build the exact structure that they're proposing. And not only would that be a significant expense, probably what they build may not even be as good as what's there just because of when it was built and the workmanship of the time, and it would be a horrendous waste of resources in my mind. So I think that that is the, is the undue hardship. And certainly the other, um, conditions apply since it's the existing structure that's nonconforming, it's not taking away from the, the neighborhood, you know, it's in keeping with the neighborhood, so. And I think building another structure is just another lesser solution to what, what there, you know, to, to build another structure that is separate from the one that's there is just another, a less elegant solution to the problem. So it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, thank you. Joel?
Um, I struggled with the undue hardship as well, but essentially to knock something down so that we can move it over by six or eight inches, there's no benefit to anyone for that. And that's where the hardship is, is that knock it down and then we're not even in this meeting anymore to put back what the equivalent plan.
Where are you with respect to unique circumstance and altering the essential character of the locality?
Um, the essential character, it, the new design fits within, somewhat within the roof, um, the roof lines of the existing house. Unique circumstances are the fact that the existing garage is nonconforming, and that's not a circumstance that the current owner created nor desired.
Okay. Excuse me. So my perspective on this is that I am sympathetic to the undue hardship argument that tearing down the garage is, is, is in itself, that doesn't in itself represent, represent a hardship. Uh, I am comfortable with the design as proposed to not affecting the character of the locality. I struggled a little bit with the unique circumstance requirement, and we as a, as a board have, have endeavored to clarify how unique should be determined, but I think that as, as David has articulated there, in this case, I think that there, one could construct an argument that, that there is a, a little bit of an overlap between the hardship and the unique circumstance. And I think that given the, I'm sympathetic to small things turning into big things, and so we can say that, oh, it's only six inches, and then, you know, that's like saying, who else, so the whole housing collapse started because someone decided that a six-twenty credit rating wasn't all that different from six-eighteen, and then the whole economy implodes. Not suggesting that'll happen here, but there's, I'm just sympathetic to that and would ask that you also appreciate that sometimes when you give two inches here, then next month it's gonna be four inches, and then, you know, so, so we do have to be mindful of that. I am mindful that the board is considering recommendations that we have made with respect to clarifying these requirements and making them, um, more accommodating of, of variations that residents would like to make. So the net of it is, I am comfortable with, with this proposal meeting the requirements. And I, I would just add, excuse me, that, that Greg, you've done a very nice job of proposing a solution here, and I, it reflects, I can't help but, but see some of the discussions that we had while you were a commissioner here, reflected in, in this design. I think it's very sympathetic to the home and to the property, and so I just wanted to applaud you from a, from an architectural standpoint, that it was very nicely done. And I agree with David that if we're going to grant a variation of this, when you, when you add everything together, that this is a situation where I think personally it makes sense to, to grant. So any other questions, comments? If not, then I would ask for a motion and a second.
I have a motion that we, uh, that we accept, or that we grant the variance and go to the board with such.
Okay.
Second.
Here a second. Okay. Sonia, would you kindly toll roll?
Commissioner Lesniak?
Yes.
Commissioner Murhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Pilateer?
Yes.
Commissioner McGarry?
No.
Commissioner Kachar?
Yes.
We have four ayes, so the motion passes.
Great. Thank you all very much. Uh, and again, just procedurally, you're aware that this, this will go before the board, and they will, they will act accordingly. This is advisory to, to them, so. Thank you very much. Any other matters that we need to discuss while we are in session?
No.
Okay. Then do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much.